Are we good to start then?
Yes.
All right, so I'd like to hereby call this Orange Township Zoning Commission meeting on Tuesday 22nd, 2025, where we are continuing our discussion of the zoning code rewrite. Can I please have a roll?
Mr. McNulty.
Yes.
Ms. Foster.
Yes.
Ms. Trebels.
Yes.
Mr. Pierce.
Here.
Mr. Abadou.
Yes.
All right, so, Robin, can you go ahead and give us the rundown of what we're gonna cover today?
All right, well, thank you all for being here on a beautiful evening outside. We'll try to have an equally beautiful evening inside. As we dive into Article 21, which is the general development standards in the new draft code, so, rolling right into it, this is going to be where we get into the weeds in a lot of things, sometimes literally, where this is, you know, it's called general development standards, so these are going to be pretty widely applicable across all zoning districts. I'd say a lot of these are focused on commercial, but some of them, and a fair amount of them, apply to both commercial and residential, so just a reminder that this is kind of across all the zoning districts that we've talked about, these are things that will be generally applicable almost everywhere in the township, once they go into the new zoning districts. Okay, so we'll start 21.01 and 21.02, I don't know that we need to dive into too much, those are kind of just general language that, you know, we may look to shift these around a little bit, because they are, they're properly located in this section than in that they are generally applicable to everywhere, but they don't necessarily have to be in this section, they're not terribly specific, but just some language that needs to be in the zoning resolution somewhere, so it is there, but I don't know that we need to dwell on it too much at this point, there's not a whole lot of specific standards that apply from 21.01 or 21.02. I'll pause there, did anyone see anything or have any red flags that came up to you, either in 21.01 or 21.02, before we move on?
Is there a statement that children's playsets or playhouses are not considered accessory structures?
I know that language exists in our current zoning, I don't believe it's here, but we can...
How do people feel about that? Children's play structures not being considered accessory structures?
For your home, right?
Yeah.
For a single-family home.
Yeah, yeah, it'd be like, it'd be like, you can buy not only like a playset from Costco, but you can also buy like a playhouse from Costco, or you can get a plastic one from Walmart or something like that.
Leave that to the Walmart and the Macy's.
Right, yeah, I think so too.
Because they're gonna take all that anyway.
Yeah, and so in our current zoning resolution, we do have specific language that calls out playstructures and swing sets and those things. So we, you know, I think it's not harmful to add that, in general, what we count as a structure has to meet two criteria, one is that it's at least 100 square feet, and two is that it has to be permanently fixed to the ground somehow, so probably most children's playstructures won't meet that definition anyway, but just in case, we can, we can add some language to it that is clear.
I don't think there's a definition for it, so...
Yeah.
We can add that too, to clarify.
I see it as big difference than the tool shed, or the garden shed.
Right.
Yeah, same with me.
Permanent structures are the only things that we've typically gotten involved with in the past.
Right.
And the only reason I bring it up is our neighborhood, there was a big brouhaha when someone tried to build a children's playhouse, because they considered it an accessory structure, and they wanted it to go through the HOA, which did not allow accessory structures in the backyard, and everyone was like, "It's a playhouse, come on." It's not a she shed, it's not a garden shed.
So they did not allow that?
They didn't. Well, they had started constructing it, and when someone complained, they stopped.
Everything, every day you learn something.
I know.
Now, you just got pasty neighbors who calls havoc for kids.
Exactly.
That's all I can think of.
And that's how the best neighbor gets pegged on.
I was like, that is long, that should has long since passed, because the kids are graduated OSU from now, but when they were little...
Okay.
My only comment on 2101 is if we had to reference a specific noise resolution, because I do wanna update it eventually, that's just something we can...
I think we can, yeah, we can definitely...
I don't know, if we have to be specific, but our noise resolution is a little archaic, so...
No doubt.
I recommend saying, so you've got the specific resolution number, comma, as may it be amended, and I add some additional language, as may be amended from time to time?
Yeah.
Okay.
And Julie, just so, here's a generalized question about this section that talks about, you know, glare, light, exterior, you know, heat, liquid, solid waste, vibrations and noise, these are things that aren't typically regulated through zoning, and may or may not have, you know, rules from other agencies that they have to follow, do you see any particular advantage or disadvantage to having them in this section?
I think, I mean, I think in terms of, and I agree with your concern, in that it kind of overlaps with a variety of other entities enforcement, you know, public health is obviously involved with liquid and solid waste and that type of thing, but I think just from a general proposition, it's okay to include that in there.
Can we put discernible by both humans and pets?
Sure.
Put what?
Noise, vibration, noise, discernible by, so...
Say again, what do you?
Humans and pets.
So I would, because zoning is more about the actual use, and the township is very restrictive, the noise resolution is where the township's authority to really, I don't know, enforce and restrict noise, that's where that lies, so I would, I'd probably caution, including specific examples in, I would just say, you know, it's kind of general here, and then also needs to be in compliance with the noise resolution.
But I think we are also looking at updating our noise resolution, so that, that is good feedback for that.
Because there was, I don't know if you guys followed the, like, last month, big news about someone in Colorado put a invisible fence, where invisible fence with noise, that was only pet detectable, so he had a lot of neighbors who had pets, and he didn't want any of the pets to come into his lawn, so, and it was a big issue.
They caught the vision, they didn't come over.
So it was a noise that was very annoying to the dogs, I think, so...
And the township's ability to restrict noise is very limited, and then, even then, it has to be, the sheriff is the one who's responsible for enforcing, which, a lot of township clients that are like, "Yeah, the sheriff's office just isn't, they're just not here when it's making noise," so, but yeah, that sounds, that sounds pretty terrible, that sounds awful.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just locked my car.
Fortunately, that's not a situation that I have come across, hopefully, we don't have to deal with it. Any other comments, questions, concerns on 01 or 02? All right, well, we will move into Section 21.03 then, which deals with lighting, so I'd say, in general, our, our lighting code is going to stay pretty similar to what it is now, I don't know that there are a ton of big changes to talk about, I do wanna, one thing that we're adding is a maximum Kelvin temperature for the lights, which has to do with kind of the soft, soft lighting versus the, it's the color tone of the light, basically, so the, the higher Kelvin level is more of a white light, like a security light, the softer Kelvin level would be kind of what's, what's above you, that's more of a yellowish light, but kind of establishing that cutoff at 3500 Kelvin.
I'm curious with the company that came in and redid this, whether there's any new technology that would cover all those lights used to have for the big parking lots, you know, Walmart, the Meyer, you know, and all those lights, that say, "Oh, new technology has allowed there to be half as many of those," and maybe not quite as high, has anything like that occurred with, coming from those folks?
They were pretty comfortable with the, the lighting language that we have currently. One thing that is, that we are removing, kind of dealing with updated technology, is in our old code, it did have references to wattage sometimes, which just isn't applicable anymore with LED lights.
Yes, right, right.
So removing that language, but in terms of the, kind of the main lighting standard that we look at is foot candles, and that's still a very universal measurement.
And the height and type of light, and that, that's all within today's standards?
Yeah, and I do wanna bring up a few things, and I have them on the PowerPoint there, so, one is that we have a 20-foot limit for both lighting mounted on poles and then lighting mounted on buildings, we have, over the last few years, have had some developers come in that ask for exceptions to that, and there are, there's trade-offs with that, so do wanna have a brief discussion, if you all have any thoughts on that, because, you know, the thinking is, if the light poles are higher up, you cover more ground with each of those individual lights, and so you end up needing fewer lights, but then also there's more potential for trespass onto another property if the lights are higher.
Yeah, is there, is there such a thing as, where you can have a differentiation from the perspective of, maybe like when it comes to the edge, or it comes closer X number of feet, that it has, it can't exceed it?
Right, and, and so what we, that, that would be a good thought, what we look at now is the foot candle level at the property line, and so, you know, if it's point zero, 0.4 or 2.0, depending on residential or commercial zoning district, that's, you know, what we look at, but it could make sense that, you know, maybe in the center of your site, you get some higher light poles, I could see that working.
Yeah, that's what I'd probably advocate, I mean, from a safety perspective, a minimalization of the number of lights that would be required in, in the big, main, general area, I mean, I would go with higher heights, but whatever the, within X distance from the next property, commercial, or what have you, that it has to be a smaller hole, to limit, to limit this.
See, that would drive me crazy though.
The consistency on the...
On the height would bother me, if you're talking like a large parking lot, and half of them are at one height, and the other ones are lower.
Well, it's not gonna be in the center, I mean, think of it as a, from a design perspective, that the edges are all uniform, and then the rest of the space internally are all uniform at X height, I mean, I wouldn't expect to see, you know, here next to a pole that's 25 foot, or something like that, it's just kind of a mixture, no, I mean, it has to be uniform in the center, and then wherever the edges that you're concerned about, but that's your...
See, I would rather have all the parking lights the same height, and then the wall-mounted ones on the building adjustable, because they'd be on a building.
But they are, it's 20 foot, right, and a building height, an average residential building height can be 35?
Exactly.
And we have seen those lights that are around the house, that means they are violating?
Um, if they're...
Residentially, don't, like, single-family lighting, I don't think we regulate that, so, it's more for, this is more for like, commercial.
And then they would have, generally, they have wall packs that are supposed to
Look down.
Look down, as opposed to like shining in someone's windows like a spotlight.
Yeah, and so the, there is, it's, Section 21.03A1 exempts from this section, lighting on residential properties that does not exceed 2850 lumens, so it does exempt certain low-level lights like that.
I think you got it.
Hey, one, one issue, Mark Freeman for 78 Glen Side Lane, Powell, one issue that I have is that there are commercial properties visible from mine that are at a higher ground level than mine, so, even though the parking lot lights are at a reasonable height, I am looking basically straight into bare filaments, looking out my window, so, when you talk about having a higher limit in the center, somebody in an adjacent property that's like a little downhill from there, you know, that's kind of shining right in their windows, not necessarily exceeding the lumens at the property line thing, but when you're looking at that, there's like, you know, it's like you're looking at the sun, so, there's that aspect of it, there's also, like, if somebody's washing the facade of a structure, that light doesn't reach the property line, but now you're looking at this big bright thing, and that, you know, maybe that's something we ought to take into account in some way. In a residential property, somebody that's got some architectural lighting shining up from their lawn, it's not a big deal, but commercial structures, some of those lights can get quite bright.
The distance between commercial and residential setbacks should maybe at least cover that, right, that is the only way we have.
The setbacks wouldn't apply to a lighting structure.
No.
What is it currently, what you're proposing, what we're gonna keep for lighting now, is what it is currently, and do we get complaints from other businesses, who are neighboring businesses, or from our current lighting?
At least, I know people have asked for taller light poles.
Developers.
Developers, yes, sorry, not a resident, but yeah, developers have asked for it, I, but I would say most of the time, it's, they comply, I mean, Jennings Sports Park is really the only one that's kind of completely abnormal, because, but they went through a whole zoning process just for that, or zoning change, honestly, the rooftop lighting is the most common complaint right now, for what I've experienced, but...
What do you mean by rooftop lighting, exactly?
So we had a business recently go in that had, like, kind of like a neon thing all around it, and people were not thrilled about that.
It was what I would call accent lighting.
Yeah, some of those were put on post, post, I mean, their own doing at any time, it wasn't something that came before, wasn't part of their proposal or anything like that, was it?
No, it was, in fact, not shown on the lighting plan that they submitted for their permit.
But for a commercial building, that would be above 20 feet, right, so?
It, yeah, it depends.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we've had enough requests for variations, I, you know, I don't know what is the biggest challenge, but I, but I think that going up is, you know, 25 foot, or what, what has been the average request height that's been out there?
But what is the reason for the request plates?
Yeah, feel like, feel like...
For, for any, any big lot, we almost always, I can't think of a time when they haven't requested something taller, that happens, oh, that's 100%, you're gonna get the request, but they always request things, they know there's a good chance of really getting turned down, and they know that, and I'm not sure here that, I think all of them did, I could be wrong about that, but I think for the most part, none of those really got accepted, but again, I could be wrong, remember all the details.
Yeah, I know, I know people have asked for taller lights.
Yeah, so...
And yes, it's because they're trying to provide, cut the cost and have fewer poles in the parking lot.
Yeah, but that, that makes sense, that's a safety story on poles, I got too many poles, where I had somebody might run into one, it's cost-effective, it's, you know, perhaps less light being spilled unnecessarily, and so...
No, more light gets spilled, the higher your light poles are, the more likely you have to have light spillage, and the more likely it is to be more pronounced than if it's lower.
And, and here is where...
Why else do you think we have like a glow on the horizon that is Columbus?
Yep.
I'm sorry.
Here is where the problem for the general welfare of the community, so I, I teach my daughter to see stars, especially in winter, and when you have light pollution, especially during winters, after like midnight, you typically have most of the residential's light very low, but commercial still is on all throughout the night, and you want to look, you want to position your telescope away from commercial, and if you have those higher poles, what ends up happening is there is more pollution, light pollution, it's for anyone, kids who are trying to watch eclipses and all of that, it's...
You have a safety issue too, and so if we didn't have the light, and something happened to someone, that's gonna be a bigger issue.
Well, I mean, that's for us for zoning.
They're still required to cover.
We have, this township does not require streetlights in subdivision, Evans Farm had to get, I guess, a variance, or whatever you wanna call it, just so they could have lights in Evans Farm, and the whole reasoning behind it was, you know, we're a rural community, you wanna see the stars, whatever.
Right, but I'm referring to in a commercial parking lot.
Yeah.
If I'm going somewhere in a commercial lot, and something happens to me, I personally vandalize my auto, anything happens, and I'm angry, and upset, because it was not enough light.
Yeah, 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 I agree.
So I think the commercial lots need to have the well lit.
And I, there is a requirement to have a minimum foot candle level, so, you know, the foot candle level would probably stay the same whether or not it's a 20-foot or 25-foot height, so...
I mean, the electrical engineer on the project figures out where to put the light poles, so the foot candles can meet the requirements for safety purposes, just like you have to have them on a certain, you know, paths of walking paths, and things of that nature.
Well, I mean, I'm in favor of fewer poles, as long as the light is covered, and keep it the same, whatever the story may be, but certainly fewer poles, higher thing being, it's commercial, folks, I mean, that's on the highway here, that sort of thing, I don't know, you know, I'm not saying, I get it, light travels or what have you, but at the end of the day, I, I see no justification for just keeping it at 20, just...
I just quit, did a quick Google what the standard is for commercial, it's 20 to 25 feet, so, I mean, we can go to 25, but I don't know.
I think 25 is reasonable, and we can stop having so many developers, we can stop having to make so many requests for, and if they wanna...
They're still gonna request more.
Well, if they request more, that's fine, we say, "Okay, 25 is the limit, we changed it, we heard you, we listened," or whatever the story may be, I mean, we wanna be good neighbors to encourage commercial development, there's a benefit to the township, I think, so...
I think the place you have to be careful is the place he lives, but I'm not sure any other place is gonna exist like that one, where you're sitting next to a Home Depot in a big lot.
Yeah, it would be impossible to do it by...
You're already sitting in a spot that's rare, that doesn't really exist, any place else in Orange Township, you know, so...
Well, I think it will impact some of the apartment complexes that are, that are moving off of 23.
Yeah, absolutely, and that's why I'm, I'm still for giving it 20.
The housing neighborhood near, behind Kroger is not really...
But they still cannot pollute any so further.
We already got the football light, and you don't have any fire light.
As, as she just said, it's, you know, you still can't pollute, you can't...
You can't exceed X amount past the property line.
So there's still limitations to govern how much light and what, where it could fall, and that sort of thing, and we leave that to the engineers, right?
Can we vote on this?
I, I kinda need to, I'm hearing a split decision, so...
I don't have a whole lot of consensus on this.
I have, I have one question, the lights at the Meyer and at the Home Depot are higher than 20 feet, because they were built before that restriction was put in.
Plus zoning was all over the map, you get, you get that part of Orange Township, and you're gonna struggle to find any assistance.
Does anyone know what height those poles actually are? Are they 25, are they 30, are they 50, I mean, I don't know.
So, and I'm testing my memory, we actually went out and measured the Meyer lights a few years ago, because this came up, I wanna say they were 25 to 28, I don't remember exactly how high, they were certainly over our 20-foot.
Just like, I think the ones in Walmart are around 30, but I'm not sure.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, so the question...
I wouldn't guarantee it, but they are higher than standard, because they were built before the zoning was brought down to 20, so there was a reason at some point why 20 was established.
Yeah, but we need to understand what that is, so we can reevaluate whether or not it still makes sense.
I mean, there are, less to your point, there are light poles in the township that are 25 feet, and that's just, they're installed prior to different zoning, I mean, it exists in the township, so...
And it fears the work.
Yeah, so I guess, I guess, just to get some majority understanding, like, are we keeping the height standards at 20 feet, or do we want to increase it to 25, with, you know, if we increase it, it still maintains the same pollution standards and, you know, light levels within the property and outside, outside the property?
Fewer light poles in the...
Yeah, in the parking lot.
In the parking lot.
Well, there was a time when I used to hear from township, and from attorneys and township people, "Dark skies, Orange Township, forget that, folks," you know, at the time, it was like, "Oh, you dark skies in a community of 40,000 people."
Yeah, and that was never a policy, it was, it was, let's try to do this.
It's aspiration, yeah.
The truth is, it has now, I disappeared, I haven't heard it in a while, because they've got, people got realistic, that that just was never possible, but I think that was the reason for keeping the lights low, and...
And why we don't have streetlights.
And why we don't have streetlights.
Has nothing to do with cost.
Exactly, all that was about, you know, that whole fantasy of dark skies.
Okay, so, what are we doing?
I'm in favor of 25.
Okay.
I'd go with that as well.
I wanna keep it at 20.
I wanna keep it at 20.
Dennis?
I'll keep it at 20, I think, for the...
All right.
Well, straw poll indicates.
You know, again, this is a living document, if we see this problem over and over again, we can come back and...
So I, I was just telling Julie this, but one of the more recent divergences that I remember for light pole height was for BJ's, they asked for a divergence for that, that divergence was approved by the zoning commission and the board of trustees.
I did not approve it.
I understood, but, but the vote was.
And it was a matter of contention for me, because they said it was for public health and safety.
And, and so... And, and so, when they actually came in and built with their zoning permit, their light poles were twenty feet. They asked for the divergence and then did not use it.
Okay, now I feel better. 'Cause I know they asked for it merely because they felt they were competing with the Walmart next door, um.
Have you seen how slow business is there at the BJ's? It might be because they don't have sufficient lights, I assure you. It's the most empty parking lot I've ever seen, I'm just like, wow.
With the gas.
Except for the gas, they have the best gas ever, yeah.
I might make another conversation.
I think BJ's is hard to get in and out of.
That's the other.
That's really.
I'm from the very side of the road, there's no way to fix it. And then when Walmart wouldn't give them the property to, to drive across and into that lot.
And folks used to drive across automatically, and then they'd go, Walmart put this thing there, that's like, no, you're not gonna do that.
All right, well, um, we also wanna talk about the, the rooftop lighting. So in our current code, we do have a, a passage that specifically explicit's rooftop lighting except for accent lighting. Uh, I think it was, it was brought up, um, by a reviewer of this document that, that provision is not in this draft code. Uh, is that something that we want to include as a, would be a prohibition on rooftop mounted lighting?
Can we go back to the temperature scale?
Yeah.
You said thirty-five hundred, which is something similar to this, right? Five thousand is daylight, five thousand Kelvin is daylight. Are you sure we don't have many of the parking lots are all five thousand? I believe, they're all daylights.
Probably they are higher than thirty-five hundred.
What does our code say right now?
There is none.
Okay.
There, there are cer- certain planned districts that have a, a limit.
If you've ever been annoyed by oncoming headlights that seem unusually bright, it's not that they're unusually bright that's regulated, but they're at a much higher color temperature, they get up into that blue-white area and it's just perception wise. It's just more, more of a piercing kind of light, so that's not something you really want in a parking lot. That said, thirty-five hundred may be very conservative, I mean, that's, that's a fairly warm light.
Thirty-five hundred is very conservative and might have an impact on how many lights people, uh, they might have to install to get the foot candle for safety, you might want to check on that.
Yeah, 'cause it, it, it may be that four thousand or forty-five hundred is a more reasonable limit.
Five thousand is a daylight, I know that.
Yeah, yeah, you don't wanna go quite that high.
My, my brief Google search says experts recommend a temperature between four thousand and five thousand.
Yeah, I, I saw, I saw that too, so.
I'm looking at the light chart on my phone.
Do you wanna, just like, do you wanna increase it?
The other end of it, you get those, you know, sodium vapor lights that sometimes they use like in, um, parking lots for, like state parks and things that are like super yellow and they're just terrible.
Are we looking for a minimum and a maximum?
I think we should.
I don't know if we need a minimum, but.
No, the minimum wouldn't apply because we, again, we look at the foot candles for the pollution, so it's just the maximum temperature what we would need, so.
And you said four, four thousand to five thousand?
So how about five, five thousand is the max, which is what?
So, at our home, we use that five thousand, we have color-changing lights, LEDs, and during winter, four to seven, four to, evening four to seven, we use those, just to make people feel comfortable, not drowsy.
Oh, can you?
So five thousand is the story?
That seems to be the consensus.
Yes, yes, yes.
Five thousand.
Got it.
If that helps.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, rooftop lighting, any objections about prohibiting roof- rooftop lighting?
So similar, similar language from the code, just moving it into our new one.
So what are the exceptions, or are there any exceptions?
I think it's the accent lighting, right?
Accent lighting and like holiday lighting.
Okay. All right, so I have a church and I'm lighting up my cupola, that's considered accent?
Is it all year round?
Yeah.
Probably.
I'm just asking, 'cause a lot of like church fires are lit, cupolas are lit, um, flag poles, if you have a flag pole on top of a building, and you're required technically to keep your flag lit, uplit.
Maybe we define what accent lighting means, and then that'll be.
Yeah, if you, if you flag the flag at night, and then take it down, it's supposed to be lit.
So we'll move the.
Because it's a safety issue.
It's an interesting point about the flag, because we say that all the lights have to point down, there's a cap, right? But if the law says you've got a light up to a flag, we've got a conflict.
Yeah.
Welcome to America.
Okay, I think we can.
So.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I don't know if I'm gonna search for it right now, I know in our current, um.
That was interesting with the flag, I don't really.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, it's.
In our current.
Girl Scouts, Girl Scouts one-on-one.
What is that building, the, the church that was downtown, that was on Forest? And it would be lit, and you would just see the image of Jesus right there, that church, you're coming around and thinking, oh! You gotta stop.
In our current signage code, I believe, um, we have an exception for flag lighting, but I, I won't, I can make sure that there is similar language.
Yeah, I mean, so I, I would want an exception for flag and potential religious purposes. I don't know enough about various religious sects and which ones require lighting on buildings or domes or what have you, but.
Under twenty-one oh two, there is a twenty-one oh two A, nope, I'm sorry, twenty-one oh three A two permits temporary holiday lighting.
But I thought you said maybe this is year-round requirement, Phil, right?
Yeah, for the churches.
Well, for churches or for religious purposes and flag poles, it should be year-round.
We can clarify that.
I guess they had floodlights three thousand years ago, that was very important, part of the founding of the religions, right? What about accent lighting? Do we want to have anything that limits the brightness of lighting that isn't really designed to illuminate anything, but just kind of be a colored light up there, like you were saying with the, with the lining of the, the edge of the structure, that kind of thing?
I think we can work that into a definition.
Yeah.
So how about those big rotating beacons that they put in parking lots for.
Those would.
Those are prohibited.
Searchlights are prohibited.
I like them.
I think, I think they're really cool too, but I could imagine somebody sticking on on a roof as a permanent fixture.
I just, I like to follow and figure out who has the bright light.
All right, anything else on lighting?
Okay, the hearing done, we will move on. Section twenty-one point zero four is the dimensional standards chart, I don't know that we need to get into this because we've talked about, uh, these are basically all the setbacks and regulations for each individual zoning district, so we've covered this. When we went through, uh, the zoning district, this chart may or may not end up being in this part of the document in the final version, or it may or may not be in there at all, um, but we, we have talked about the, the content of that in other meetings. But there for, for your reference. Uh, twenty-one point zero five is the street-facing facade design standards. Don't have a whole lot to discuss here, um, so if you'll recall, when we did, um.
Actually, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is an issue as an architect that I have in various jurisdictions of maximum building height. Specify where that maximum building height, how that is determined.
Yeah, and so.
Did we talk about that?
Yeah, so we, we did talk about that in article three or four, but it, it's probably a good idea to reference that, so thank you for that comment.
So if, it's just like a little code.
Like a footnote or something?
Yeah, footnote or something, that tells you how to determine your maximum building height. I literally just got deemed on that on a project because I used the city of Columbus standards and not another jurisdictional standards.
Rob, so Robin, are we keeping this table in here, or is that moving somewhere else?
It will probably either move or go away.
Okay, so, so when Christine is trying to reference it, she would go to article three?
Correct, um, because I, I think the, what could happen is this table, this comprehensive table gets removed from the document, but we can still have it on our website or something if you wanted to compare the, you know, those development standards across zoning districts. Okay, street-facing facade design standards. This is something that we discussed, um, at some length back a year or so ago when we did our previous round of work sessions on this document. I, I said then and I will say it again that I am not an architect. Uh, Christine has kindly lent me her architectural dictionaries, uh, which I still have in my office, so there's, there's still some tweaking that needs to be, uh, done on this section. So I don't know that we need to get into all of those details, um, because I, I do have a running list of things that need to be changed. But the, the overall gist of this, this section is that it requires certain architectural elements on non-commercial buildings. And so this is to, to avoid, uh, architectural uniformity, it's to avoid just blank walls, it's to avoid, you know, somebody just putting up a bunch of pole barns and, and not having attractive-looking buildings, uh, while still allowing for flexibility in design. So, uh, the feedback that you all gave a year or so ago has partially been incorporated into this section, but I, I think I have a, a good running list of things that, to tweak further. One of which was, uh, you know, we have kind of the, a list of, uh, design options, uh, that builders can choose. Those are on, for me, it's page one ninety-one, uh, but it's twenty-one point zero five B. So the, um, I think the consensus last time was to add a few of those as options, uh, but also increase. For example, you need to have three of each of these, uh, and we would increase those number of options for flexibility for architects. The other main portion of this is the table in twenty-one point zero five B, which you see on the screen there, uh, which is, uh, the building materials, I think some of these, uh, we may end up removing, like, the architectural metal. Uh, I was unable to get a satisfactory answer from our consultant as to precisely what architectural metal was and why it would be a good thing.
Usually it's architectural metal panels that you would see in like industrial buildings. Or, uh, some commercial applications, um, car dealerships, for example, might have architectural metal panels.
Okay, that is helpful.
All right.
But I, you know, some of the, like, the accent materials, ephors and, and fiber cement board, those are pretty common as primary siding materials, so I think those can be shifted over to the left-hand column so that they can be the, the predominant material.
Yeah.
Is this the current standard?
No, uh, so some, some planned districts have architectural standards which we're trying to emulate, basically, uh, that, you know, do require some kind of natural material for the majority of a building, brick, stone, uh, ephors, uh, cementitious fiber, but not all planned districts do, and so that's why this is in article twenty-one, so that it would apply across all districts.
And I could say, almost guarantee, most buildings do not use terracotta, except perhaps potentially as an accent, but even then, it's very expensive. It's not a standard sort of building material, if you're gonna build a building. Brick, stone, uh, you could either use cast stone or simulated stone as well, fiber cement, ephors.
Vinyl.
Why don't people use real stone?
No, no, vinyl.
Why what?
Vinyl.
Vinyl, yeah, vinyl.
They'll use vinyl.
Yeah.
Yeah, and typically, um, the majority of our planned districts allow vinyl as a, uh, an accent material, but not as a, a primary.
But a lot of, um, like, a lot of residentials will have vinyl siding, there's different quality to that.
Yeah, I think that's the tricky part, is, you know, vinyl can be more affordable. Uh, my understanding is the, um, the New Urban Society of, of the US has recently allowed vinyl as a, a primary siding material, whereas they didn't use to because there's been advances in the technology, which make it look really attractive, but it's still.
That's exactly right, although vinyl's been improved technology a lot, so, so, yeah, that can't be thought of the same way today as it was thirty years ago.
Yeah, we used to be really against it.
Yeah.
What?
Vinyl siding.
Vinyl, yeah. I mean, I still, um, in some applications, I'm against it, 'cause, um, it has to be of the higher quality, uh, mill thickness that's greater, um, so it doesn't like dent in a hailstorm.
And, and generally speaking, I, I don't know that anybody has come in with a proposal that, that asked for a divergence for, you know, vinyl-sided buildings, I, it hasn't really been an issue, so I'm okay with keeping it.
Well, we don't have any architectural standards right now, right?
Um, no, but people will add them in.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, so this is all new to us, we will have standards to actually work off of. So architectural and landscaping is brand new to the township. We have like one sentence in landscaping right now, just says, "Cut your grass."
Part of what you get with the, uh, increased thickness of the vinyl is there's more opportunities to do more with texturing so that can more closely emulate a more natural material, wood shakes, that kind of thing. That wasn't, it just simply wasn't possible twenty, thirty years ago. I mean, I'm all for vinyl on, uh, on residential. Aluminum, not so much, but vinyl, yeah. But if we wanna regulate what a minimum mill thickness would be, or some other way of specifying it so that people aren't using just crap, um, that might be beneficial.
And I would not have a problem with like vinyl or composite or even fiber cement on a commercial building, for example, like a daycare, or something that was more scaled, um, to, um, like a one-story residential type building, if that makes sense.
Some of that new vinyl was approved on, how long ago, it was too long ago, maybe just a couple of years ago, on some of those, uh, either condos or apartments, you know, so, yeah, we, we, we've already seen it, we've seen that before.
All right, well, we can do some research on if there are standards that we can add for, you know, allowing certain thickness of vinyl. It's not something that I know much about, but we can do research.
It, it's been talked about here before, and even came, like, even come up before, and we approved it, 'cause they, some of this stuff showed up to us yet.
I have a question, is architectural metal also included steel?
I would say that would be more structural steel. For me, architectural metal could be architectural metal panels, it could be like, um, metal cladding, so example, you have a storefront and you have a steel column in the middle, a lot of times we'll use, uh, break metal trim to make that storefront look larger and make that column look like part of the storefront, so it'd be like break metal trim. Uh, you would also see it perhaps on the top of a building, capping like a parapet. You have like a metal, um, break metal trim up there, uh, you could consider architectural metal, potentially gutters, downspouts. Um, you could use it in a awning type. You could use it in a awning type capacity as well, where you have an awning, sort of almost like you would see like a theater marquee, or just like a flat awning with cables or metal guides.
I mean, event spaces with glass and steel are pretty common.
Yeah, for commercial.
For commercial. If someone came with, "I want to build an event space with glass and steel," where would that fit here?
So I'm assuming the glass would be like a storefront glass, and then the architectural metal, I'm assuming would be, the steel would be the support, but it would have to be clad in something. A lot of times you don't see steel, especially if it's structural, because it would have to be fireproofed anyway. So you take your steel and then you would have to fireproof it with either intumescent paint or spray to fire, spray-applied material, and then you would encapsulate it. And if you wanted it to look like metal, you would encapsulate it in break metal trim.
So what I'm hearing is maybe architectural metal can be moved to the accent materials?
I doubt you're just gonna have, I mean, if you're talking about eighty percent of a metal building, you're talking about like a Butler building or like a prefabbed metal building.
Right, and that was my concern with having it in the predominant materials.
Which would be like, I think it's Bond Industries, and there's another building off of Orange in that block that's industrial. And those are like prefabbed industrial buildings.
So do, do we want to have that as part of the predominant or accent materials?
You also get that in storage buildings, too. I don't have a problem with it if it's in an industrial area. I would have a problem with it if it was on 23, or.
And what about if they wanted to build a new White Castle with the ceramic sides? I don't think they're doing that anymore, but they used to.
They used to, they have, they don't. And the old White Castle headquarters, they actually tore down the old.
So are you suggesting having certain material standards depending on the district? I'm just trying to figure out how to, like, organize it.
I mean, for me, if you're in an industrial building in an industrial area, a Butler building-type warehouse doesn't necessarily bother me. Or it will be like maybe an all-concrete, you know, panel that they put on, prefabbed panels.
You know, I think the other thing to, to remember with these standards also is that people can't ask for divergences. People can't ask for variances, so it's, you know, we want to craft these so that these capture ninety-five percent of the cases, but there are release valves for those five percent where it may make sense in certain circumstances.
But it's a, if it's a straight district they're applying for, they can't.
They can apply for a variance from the VZA.
Oh, VZA, yeah, yeah. But that would be a hunch.
Can it sit on both sides?
Well, it can, it's, so it's, these are minimums, so if the eighty, if the eighty, if it's something is on the eighty percent, that's. It could be a hundred percent. And then the accent materials are maximum.
So, I mean, I guess someone, I guess my question is, if someone wanted to use the architectural metal as an accent, they allowed to do that under this thing regardless?
Yes.
There are a lot of twenty percent, right? They can, yeah, they can. But I'm, I'm wondering if someone wants to use like.
How about eighty percent minimum? An eighty percent minimum?
Yeah, eighty percent is the minimum.
Right, eighty percent minimum of that metal.
So if they, if they just wanted to use it as an accent.
Then it should be in the twenty percent.
Then it's in twenty percent, so can it be on both?
Well, I, I think rather than copying and pasting them on both, maybe we can just add a footnote that says, you know, the predominant materials can also be used as accents.
I don't know, I think this table requires a little more thought and discussion.
I, I think that's where the company, I'd get some recommendations. I mean, that's why you hire companies who've been out in the field.
They're not with us anymore, I don't think, right?
What the standards and what's going on.
Well, part of the problem with hiring a company depends upon what their expertise is in. So if they're just planners.
But they weren't, though, but that company wasn't just planners. We, we talked to them, we know that these was a company that was doing what we needed to do, you know, so that, that, that didn't happen.
I'd like to think this came out of something template or standards that they've used in the past, but I, I don't know.
But they're not available to us anymore, is that correct? Am I understanding correctly?
Yeah, they, it's been handed off to us to handle in-house moving forward, yeah.
This particular thing requires more thought, definitely, because.
Literally, are there any, any materials that you would say, "Hey, we definitely don't want this"? Is there anything like that that exists, that's in existence and in use? If I'm guessing, I'm gonna say probably not.
So, I mean, yeah, I, I mean, to Karthik's point, this is a little, this is one new, it's complicated. I don't know if the commission's willing to send Robin feedback directly, which I think you've already done some of it, but then we'll just do our best to kind of put something together.
I think that requires a tremendous amount of research, you know, especially if you're gonna put eighty percent and this should be twenty percent. I mean, yeah. That, to me, looks like, okay, if somebody's gonna put, write this and put it and say, "All right, this is, we're gonna do this in stone", then I'm already assuming, if it's a correct document, somebody's already done the research to this and determined that's what typically, the industry is typically doing. Because I, I'm, I'm on the belief, especially these days, and all the people we've seen, I don't think there's, we haven't seen anybody out there that's trying to squeeze in a bunch of low-quality stuff and passive bias. I, I'm just not really, not for materials, not for materials. I've not, I, I mean, maybe for ideas or designs, yeah, we, those are debatable, but for materials, I've not seen it. And if you, if you've got an example, I'd love to hear.
I'm sorry, I just work with.
No, if you've, you've got.
Developers and contractors who are.
Somebody's shown up here, somebody that's shown up here. I'm not talking about developers in general, I'm talking about people who've stood at this podium and brought in their documents and their notebooks, so they were trying to pass off low-cost, low-quality materials.
We did it with Schottenstein, and we made them use higher-quality vinyl with a thicker mill.
That was the guys I talked about that, that we did approve, approve the, approve the vinyl.
It was a combination of simulated stone and vinyl.
Because they had come in with some of that newer vinyl that existed.
We have pushed back on materials in the past.
But I guess my point is, I don't believe a lot of those low-quality materials are going to exist for us people showing up. Because we're, we're not in one of those low-cost things where you, oh, we're gonna put together these lowest-cost types of housing. That, that just isn't going to exist here unless it's cost plans to expect it.
Same statement with BJ's generally, and I wish Todd Dove was still here because he specializes in commercial. Usually places like Costco, BJ's, Home Depot, grocery stores, a lot of them have like a Class A, B, and C finish, and a Class C finish might be something.
They're using, though, we're talking about materials and not finish. Those materials are all still there.
But that's what I'm referring to, is the finish is the exterior finish, the materials they're using. It, it will vary upon locale, usually upon census districts, so you'll have a difference between.
You're missing my point. My point was, are there any of those materials that we've been presented with that should, should be opposed and not on that list? BJ's or nobody showed up with materials that we should have been opposed to. Now, maybe the general finish of them in some cases or not enough accent, or they have different qualities depending on which neighborhood they're building it in. I understand that. But is there any materials that should be, "Oh, we definitely don't want that material"?
Technically, BJ's use architectural concrete masonry units.
Should those be off the list? I don't even see them on the list.
She's saying they should have been limited to twenty percent.
Yeah, it should have been on the, it's on the twenty percent side.
As opposed to the eighty percent.
So here is.
So, things like that, it just.
But, I mean.
Why I ask, sorry. Why I ask more thought is because if you go to the Abinawal community that is newly being built on the Abinawal, those houses, I believe, the front is made with fiber board, fiber cement board, majority, like, I would say thirty, forty percent or more. And this table says not more than twenty percent, so.
And to clarify, this is for, this is for mixed-use, commercial, or other non-residential development. This list is not for residential.
But, but I think it, I mean, I'm glad we have this kind of chart, maybe it needs more thought. I'm glad we have this kind of chart. Certainly, I would think over time, as the architectural things change, you would update it or amend it or what have you. But, but there's also a component that says, let developers come in and see what they say about it as well, you know? How many divergence are they asking from this? Or is it holding them to a better quality standard, of course, of what we like to see? And, and maybe the question is what?
Well, that's what I'm getting into, how much research this would take if you were gonna try to say it's gonna be accurate. Because number one, you would need to know what the costs of these materials are because developers are, already know what this is. Here's what the cost of material, it's either cost-effective or it's not. And we all know that those are probably changing and have changed probably over the last five years. And none of us can possibly have any knowledge of any of that, and nor do I claim to, you know, that, but that's, that's why even the eighty, twenty takes, in my opinion, a great deal of research, even to put numbers within it.
Yeah, I remember us talking about this initially, but I think we all thought it was a good approach. And I still believe it's a, it's a good approach. The question becomes, you know, maybe, maybe I, I kind of like Dennis' question, is there any material we're seeing should, should not be used? And maybe that's the, you can use any material you want except for, but.
Well, as Dennis was implying, I think, the split, I mean, why eighty, twenty? Why not seventy-five, twenty-five? I mean, where do these numbers come from? Is there a general consensus out there in, in others jurisdictions?
Yeah, I think, well, I have an intern starting next week, I'll add it to his project list.
I would suggest looking at other communities or jurisdictions like Westerville or Dublin.
And I really do think that was what was behind this, but I don't, you know, they're based in Cincinnati, maybe they, you know, we'll look at more local stuff.
And, Commissioner, one additional kind of policy consideration, because, unless you're not wrong, that, well, there's some, something you said about, "Well, developer, you tell us." Because a kind of a policy change and shift is that a lot of the, your, the zoning resolution is shifting to a lot of straight districts, which means that you're not gonna see, you're not gonna have that negotiation like you had with BJ's, with, about the, the materials and that sort of thing. And so, so the, the policy decisions are, well, let the developer decide, or, you know, we're just, if they go to a straight district, you know, what, we're talking about the use, and you decide the design and that sort of thing, and the area, they have to meet the area standards. Versus, you still won't have final say over what it looks like, but staff as part of the approval process can confirm, okay, they're, they're in the, you know, the bowling bumper lanes. You know, they're, they're kind of in the ballpark, so, and there's no right or wrong answer, but, but, you know, those are the, those are the business decisions, and that's the tough things for, for you to think about.
Yeah, and so I, just to loop back, so we do have certain plan districts that do have these architectural standards. Eighty percent, twenty percent is a pretty standard split. You know, I think the, the general idea, and, and we can come back to you with a more refined list because I do think this could use some tweaking, certainly. But, you know, the general idea is, you know, we don't want, again, somebody just to put up a, a very cheap-looking building that has, and that's why the predominant materials is, is eighty percent, that most of these are something that either is a natural material or replicates a natural material, or otherwise is an attractive product. So that's what we're trying to, to craft with this. And, you know, that, giving them that twenty percent flexibility that, okay, you know, maybe vinyl or something is appropriate in certain areas of the building, we just don't want the whole thing to be metal or what have you.
Going back to the ability to obtain a variance and the hardship standard, all of the cost of, of the materials on the left are, you know, look, we can't build a house under, well, residential's exempt from this, so never mind, we can't build a grocery store because the cost will just be so absorbent, and, you know, that's part of that variance process. But again, in terms of the numbers and the materials, those are all, all great questions.
Okay.
Yeah, any feedback along the way? I mean, we are trying to keep this moving, so if you think of anything, always shoot us an email. And that's a lot to cover.
But thank you, I, these are good thoughts that we're generating from this discussion. It is helpful. Okay. Moving on to 21.06, which we're starting to get into the landscaping, buffering, screening portion of this. So 21.06 is the landscaping. This would come into play, it's in 21.06B. So we're generally talking about when new things are being constructed, or you're adding on significantly by twenty-five hundred square feet or more, or you're otherwise expanding by a certain percentage, which generally is twenty-five percent. So if you're just putting, you know, you know, a minor storage addition onto a, a commercial or residential building, then this may not come into play. But for, this is intended to be for major projects where these landscaping requirements would come into play. So, in general, I don't know that there's a whole lot to talk about in 21.06, except I did want to point out, I'm trying to get my numbers right here, 21.06, twelve H is the, the plant variety required. So there's, there's a requirement here that says, "No more than twenty-five percent of the landscaping on a property shall be comprised of any single plant genus." I was wondering if we think that's perhaps too restrictive, because, you know, sometimes, you know, we will get, you know, somebody has to install, you know, five hundred shrubs for, you know, their parking lot screening, and if they have to install, you know.
I was gonna say, what is grass considered?
That's a good point.
Because all of a sudden, you know, it's quite like.
Quarter grass.
You will have more than twenty-five percent grass in a commercial, you know.
Yeah, which they're required to do, in fact.
I mean, does that standard even need to be?
Yeah, I think.
Like, can we?
I think, personally, I think it can be removed.
Yeah, I agree.
If the commission is on board.
Because, I mean, there's so many other standards that, like, make sure it's maintained, native species.
Yeah, and as, as Michelle had mentioned earlier, this, this section is all new in terms of landscaping. In our, in our overlay district, we do have landscaping requirements, but almost nowhere else.
So, I have a question. On G, on twelve G, non-native, non-invasive, is that okay?
Yes, and so it's, it's, it's somewhat fluffy language, it's not very specific, that, you know, native species are encouraged, invasive species are not allowed. But anything that is not native but non-invasive. Uh, invasive species are, are not allowed, uh, but a- anything that is not native but non-invasive, yes, it's okay to use.
Do you have like a list from OSU or something that you can refer to, what's considered an invasive?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, invasive according to who? We need to provide some reference.
Yeah, so I, I typically will use.
Have a list of that.
ODNR. Yeah, ODNR has a list, but I, I think we can add.
Exactly, that's what.
Maybe you wanna spell that out as per.
As per, or the OSU extension.
Yeah, yeah, Delaware County Master Garden Association through the Ohio State Extension Center.
Yeah, the ODNR list is the one that I'm familiar with, but we can kind of work and see.
That's fine.
That'll work as well.
I'm sure they all have commensurated with.
Now, in terms, in terms of plant diversity.
That's my area there.
I think we wanna have something in there.
Very much encouraged in Ohio, honestly.
I mean, if, if somebody's got, uh, a, a whole border of pine trees and a pine blight comes through, suddenly, it's barren. You know, we, we wanna provide so that, you know, if there is some disease, you know, ash trees or whatever it is, that all of the, all the main landscaping elements don't just become barren or dead all at once.
Well, they would be required to replace it with some, something new native, a new native species, but.
Yeah, but if you've got, you know, twenty, twenty-five foot trees around a property, what are they gonna replace them with? They're gonna replace them with six-foot trees, right?
Yeah, I don't know how we can force anybody to build a new twenty-five foot.
We just want them to replace the tree.
Right, yeah, I think the, and there could be ways around this, but, uh, you know, there could be, you know, maybe you only have, uh, a very small section of area that needs to be landscaped, and so maybe you only have five trees. Does that mean you have to buy five different, you know, four or five different kinds of trees to meet that requirement rather than having?
So the only question I have, it says native species required, and then it says native species are encouraged to be planted.
Yeah, I think that was a holdover, we did, cause it did, previously, it was a requirement, and I think we've changed that along the lines. So thank you for catching that consistency.
So it is not.
It is, it is not required. It is encouraged. Okay, uh, street trees, uh, so in twenty-one point zero seven, there is a requirement, uh, for street trees, it's, the, street trees are somewhat of a misnomer because they're not actually on the street, they're on the private property next to the street. Uh, they can go in the right-of-way if the township gives them permission. Uh, generally, that is not the desire of our operations department, um, so generally, they end up on the private property. But generally speaking, the requirement is, uh, one street tree for every thirty lineal feet of roadway frontage.
And that would apply to the districts that are in that table, right?
Correct, so it's, currently, it's basically every district except FR one. Twenty-one point zero eight, uh, is the perimeter landscape requirements, uh, so this, uh, if you, there is a little figure, uh, twenty-one point zero eight A, uh, which kind of shows, uh, in visual terms what this is, so it's basically when there is a building, uh, you have some landscape area that is immediately adjacent to the building, uh, that has to be, that you have to have so many, uh, so much depth of planting area.
So that was actually my question, the street trees, you can't plant them in the right-of-way, so where are they to be planted exactly? For them to be considered street trees, and not just landscaping.
Yeah, that's a good point. Why does it define a street tea tree when you can't plant it near the street?
It's a catchy name. Catchy, street trees.
We was just joking.
So it's, it's not terribly specific, but it does say, uh, within the front yards.
As closest to the street as possible without getting in.
Yeah, I would, we can probably.
It can't arc over.
Be more specific on that one.
Yeah, I mean, just curious, or, for example, I technically had a, I don't know if it was a street tree or a yard tree, um, but it was too close to the water main. So when it came down, I wasn't gonna replant it, and, because I didn't wanna get tangled up in the water main.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's complicated depending on the type of tree, right? You don't wanna put a maple tree right next to a sidewalk because after ten years, you're not gonna have a sidewalk, you're gonna have an amusement park, right?
Same thing with an oak tree.
Most of the street trees I report, but Plano High Meadows Drive are already gone because they tore up the sidewalks. I'm very few still left, so.
I mean, I like the concept of street trees, trust me, um, I just think it needs to be sort of tightened up or.
Yeah, I, I think we can, we can tighten that up easily.
Street trees and trees.
Right. And, and that is, uh, that, you know, when they interfere with utilities and roadways and sidewalks, that, that's a lot of the objection for them being in the right-of-way.
Yeah.
As well as maintenance, that then it becomes the public entity's requirement.
Too close to the water main.
So again, on twenty-one point zero eight, uh, that's the planting areas around buildings. It's not terribly specific and that's by design, uh, but it's just saying that they shall be planted with a mix of trees and/or shrubbery and/or living ground cover.
Is, is the requirement, um, to plant on both sides or plant all around? I'm trying to, I see the minimum depth of planting area, but it's, uh, front planting, side planting.
So it's the, the front and the sides, not the rear.
But, but it's required on both sides, is that what we're seeing?
Correct, yeah, on both sides.
How do we feel about flowers?
Yeah, I think flowers would be.
Would that be acceptable?
Considered ground cover, yeah.
Okay. Does ground cover have a minimum or maximum height to it?
No.
Cause when most people landscape, they kind of stagger those flowers, they're gonna put the taller ones closer to the building and then they go down.
I think we can't, we can probably add flowers, uh, in E.
Consider that living ground cover.
I probably would too, but just to make it explicit. Twenty-one point zero nine, uh, is related but different, uh, so this is buffer yard, um, so this is not next to a building, but this is when one zone abuts a different type of zone, this is when this would come into play. So there's basically two types, there's type A and type B, uh, B is more intensive than A, uh, would require, uh, plantings that, the tree and shrubbery plantings that provide some screening between zoning districts. So whenever, you know, like we talked about with that minimum distance between commercial properties and residential, you know, part of that distance, there would have to be this, uh, buffer yard, uh, of natural materials to provide screening in addition to distance. And so you can see the, that table there, the twenty-one point zero nine A, uh, the more intensive buffer yards are always on the more intensive districts. So, uh, the flex employment, which is the industrial, uh, when it goes to residential, the industrial property has the onus of providing more screening.
I'm just curious, do you have any, um, graphics of what that looks like or anything like that?
We don't, I, I think part of that is to allow for flexibility in design.
Yeah, okay.
Let's see where, so it's the twenty-one point zero nine B, uh, is the design requirements that, that just says, you know, there has to be, uh, for each type, there has to be so many tree plantings, uh, per hundred square feet, and then shrubbery plantings, uh, per one hundred square feet.
I mean, if the intent is to have screening, shouldn't we provide some guidance as to what do we mean by that? I mean, you can plant a big line of arborvitae, which would, over time, become a contiguous screen, almost like a, a hedge. But depending on the varieties planted, it could be five years, it could be ten years, it could be fifteen years before they fill in and really provide that kind of a, a natural screening. I mean, it depends on what they're planting.
I, I agree, I, I, I don't know that it's realistic to, to have developers install fully mature plants, it's just.
Right.
Yeah, and I, I guess I just wanna remind the group, we had nothing, no, no landscaping requirements to all of this. So, I mean, it is, this is a big learning curve for us, um, it's something that we should have, but I think keeping it as flexible and open-minded as possible in the beginning until we start figuring out how this is gonna work, you know, cities have urban foresters, we do not have that here. Robin is not a landscape architect, I'm not a landscape architect, so, I mean, we gotta be really careful of, one, understanding what the code is saying, and also enforcement side of it too, so. I, I, I would hate to be super strict on what, everything that looks like, how it's aligned, but I think these are some basic standards that we never had in place that we do today.
Is, is this, uh, so when I look at like B, buffer yard width is twenty feet, but it says required tree plantings per hundred linear feet is six. And then required shrubbery planting per hundred feet, it's fifty. They have to have both of those in order to satisfy this?
Yeah.
So you, so between.
So between trees, you would have shrubs.
You'd have.
And, and the height of the shrubs is six feet.
The height of the shrubs is four feet.
For B.
Uh, for B, yeah, and that is something that we, we could look at that minimum height because that does seem high.
High, yeah.
So you need fifty shrubs in hundred linear feet.
Correct.
Of six feet.
Yeah, they could be on top of one another.
Yeah.
Yeah, something that didn't have to be right.
So.
It seems like a lot of plants.
Can easily be.
Like hedgerows.
Yeah.
But, but that might actually be too dense for the health of, of the plants.
So one additional, just conceptually, what I'm thinking through, and I like the chart, and it makes sense that certain districts next to each other should be treated differently, but what I'm struggling with is if I rezone to CC, and I am next to RR, and then at a later date, that RR rezones to, let's say, FE, what does that mean for the buffer yard? Of, are there gonna be two buffer yards? Are there, cause they, they change from A to B, um, and, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna dive too far off the deep end. But just, just thinking conceptually.
Should it be like buffered to a residential versus a commercial use?
I think that might be a bit more streamlined, possibly, and I think you got, do you, is it the RCOD, or is it one of your planned districts?
Yeah, we do have landscaping in the overlay district, yeah.
And there is like, it, it's, there's standards for resident, like if you're so far from residential or something like that, or maybe that's the building line, something like that. Again, just conceptually and, and operationally, something to think about.
Yeah, and, and given that this is, this is new, you know, I think that, um, the requirement of so many shrubberies, and then I think he was making an argument about how many could fit within, you know, growth period, and he was talking about how doesn't allow the health of the plant. I think it should be some encouragement to have, or should be some requirement, question, is it the fifty? I don't know, it's not, it's, it's new, so I think we should probably reduce it as well.
Does anyone have a landscape friend?
To get to realism, and the realism is, Robin, you, you already know it's gonna be enforcement, the realism is enforcement, it's like, yeah, if you have the different dista- districts and the landscaping changes, does anybody go out, gonna go out there, make that happen? No, we're not, you know, it's, we're gonna have to be realistic about it. I like it too, because yes, this is a big change, even putting numbers to it, cause that had never been done, it's been, hey, show us a plan, and yeah, it's approved, you know. Nobody's really, really even thought about it that far.
So I agree that it would help to sort of simplify it, um, cause right now, when I see RR first, I'm like, well, what is RR? It's more residential, on your other tables, you have it spelled out, here, you don't quite, but for me, it's more important if it's like commercial versus residential. So maybe just spell it out that way, you know, commercial versus commercial is one thing, commercial versus residential is another. The buffer yard width tells me how much space you're supposed to be, but my question is, you know, in those quote-unquote linear feet that you're putting the fifty shrubs or the six trees, is it all in the straight line or is it staggered?
Yeah, I mean, I think the language would allow it to be staggered.
That's what I'm trying to figure out, cause it would make more sense, and usually, when we've done buffers like that, we stagger them. Where, you know, uh, you have, you know, a tall, too short, tall, too short, or something like that. So maybe, in that case, a diagram would be helpful to show that it's staggered within a, you know, ten-foot range or whatever range that it's supposed to be staggered in. So it's not linear where you're trying to put them all in a straight line, but.
Well, it's also just more attractive, rather than just having a, a wallow tree, uh, you know, to have it look somewhat naturalistic. That said, is there any place in this for, uh, opaque fencing? Say of, of natural materials? I'm thinking in particular about the quote-unquote privacy fence that's in between Cheswick Village and, uh,
I think that's the next part of this.
And all that, so, you know, maybe if you have a bunch of young plants, but there's a six-foot solid surface fence behind them.
Yeah, and that is.
You're still getting the screening.
Yeah, that, that's discussed in the next part of this, but.
So, uh, let's jump to twenty-one point ten, uh, and we can, we can discuss that because it, it is, it is related and segues, but also, I think we can, we can tie it back to twenty-one point zero nine. So twenty-one ten, uh, is the screening standards, and this is not necessarily between zoning districts. So this is, uh, a slight shift, but this is screening that's required around, uh, storage of trailers, uh, other equipment, tools, machinery, loading docks, containers, outdoor sales and display, trash containers and dumpsters, those, uh, types of, uh, you know, typically commercial, uh, features which are not the most attractive parts of, of a commercial enterprise, but, but, you know, maybe necessary for a, a business to have. And so this does require, uh, some type of screening around those aforementioned, uh, features that block views, uh, between grade level and a minimum of six feet in height above grade level per, uh, C one, uh, below the table. So this does allow for, uh, fences, uh, and sometimes walls, berms, uh, and then always landscaping to be used as that screening.
How did the burn fall out into just one of flex employment's own story?
I don't know. I do not have a good answer.
Okay. Just thought it might be something unique, and I'm, would like to know what it is.
So actually, this is interesting, though. So the, I'm working on the, I have the, in front of me, I have the working draft that is, I, you know, has been added to since this draft came out. Berm was added to commercial corridor, mixed use, and farm residential in the version that I have. So that is a difference.
And more berms.
Yeah.
Location, and there may be something else in the zoning resolution that speaks to this, but just a thought of, of like Lowe's or some type of garden center that may have items out front, tools and machinery out front, which would require screening. But then that would mean that basically the front of Lowe's or Home Depot would have a six-foot tall fence out front.
So currently, in our zoning resolution, outdoor stor, commercial outdoor storage in general is prohibited. So actually, Home Depot did have, they requested a divergence and were granted it to have outdoor storage.
Okay, okay.
But that is a pretty limited exception.
They had to change it, because they originally had it out front, and we forced them to change it to where it ran along the sides and back, which became a lot better for all of us.
Okay, okay.
Yeah.
Walmart too, I think, right?
So this would be a little more permissive in that it would, you know, six-foot fence may not look great outside, but at least they can do it.
Put storage there. Okay, all right.
So they cannot do what Lowe's does on, on the Polaris Parkway where they put all the seasonal items outside, right?
Yeah. Currently, and not, not unless they get special permission.
Don't we allow temporarily the seasonal items?
Yeah. Are we allowed temp, I thought we did for the...
Around temporarily.
For sale?
Well...
Yeah, because they're out. Because for the mulch and stuff that's on the side, and for the flower beds.
Right, but again, those are, those are exceptions that were...
Yeah, that was like part of the plan district.
Yeah.
Yeah, that we allowed that.
If, you know, if a new home goods store comes in or a new garden center came in, then they would not be allowed to unless they got some kind of variance or divergence. So I guess, just a, you know, big picture, are there any concerns with this approach? Do you see any pitfalls here? And then we can also bring it back, you know. Do we think that fences would be appropriate to include as potential for the buffer yard as well?
I don't like that fence.
I don't either.
Not on the buffer yard.
I guess it depends on what kind of fence, but I don't like...
For me, it depends on what kind of fence, because if it's like a chain link fence, not so much. If it's, you know, wood or PVC or something like that.
Beautiful one.
Yeah, but...
Wood, I can see.
So like a decorative fence would be acceptable?
No, it's some, it looks like what it's just coming in.
I think so.
Units like three-foot or five-foot units.
Yeah, I mean, the naturalness, though, that you, at least that I think you would want to see between zones is...
Can we have a blanket prohibition against chain link somewhere? You just can't have it anywhere.
In certain plan districts, there are prohibitions on it, but not universal.
We don't have chain link, do we? Fence, it's chain link.
So going back, a garden center, I believe there was a garden center that had like stone and other things outside. That is not allowed anymore, right?
Correct.
I mean, I think having a reasonably decorative, mostly opaque fence as part of a buffer yard thing would help get past the, they're not going to plant fifteen-foot trees. They're not going to plant eight-foot shrubs, you know. This would provide screening until those plantings kind of matured and effectively obscured the fence.
Put up a temporary fence? I mean, I'm a little confused on that. What do you, what do you mean, put up a fence and the shrubs to do both?
That's what I'm saying, you know, so, so that, so that they could have time for these shrubs to grow together, to, to mature, to become, to, to reach a reasonable height. Meanwhile, there would be the fence there to provide a visual, visual block. But over time, the fence might get obscured by the, the plantings.
But, but if they put up a...
Obviously, I'm not saying that they should then remove the fence. You know, it would, it would, it would be a permanent structures.
Let me make sure I understand. If they put up a fence, though, they don't have to do the planting of shrubs, is that?
I think that's the question.
Yeah.
Well, that's up to the commission.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I would say that just a bare fence, no matter how attractive it is, that's not really good enough.
So there's not, there's, one, there's nothing prohibiting them from putting a fence in addition to the, you know, the landscaping buffer requirement. Two is, and we, we actually have this problem with Home Depot, is that, and Cheswick Village, to a certain extent, that there, there is a fence, and then it prevents them from being able to effectively mow and maintain the area beyond the fence that's on their property without getting onto adjacent properties.
That is an interesting problem, yes.
Yeah, I'm not so keen on the fences, fence ideal together, I think.
And the fences are, I think the fence and the buffer yard also accomplish two different things. The buffer yard truly is, may very well be a wall of sorts of vegetation, whereas the fences we're talking about are more towards screening those specific items.
Yeah.
Just like, as far as I'm concerned, like a dumpster and things of that nature need a fence or a wall.
Yeah.
It needs more than vegetation, because vegetation's not, dare I say, sturdy enough around a trash dumpster.
I agree. But this is...
Yeah, I was thinking of the fence just as a way to accommodate the fact that there's a realistic limit on how big plants are that anybody's going to put in, and it's going to take time for those to become the buffer they're intended to be. And that could be ten years, and that's kind of a long time to wait.
Yes, it's requiring.
And so the fence could fill in for that.
Unrealistic to expect a developer to put in a fence and landscaping.
He'll tell you.
They're not going to do that. I, I have clients that don't want to do that because of the cost.
Yeah.
So they either choose one or the other.
Yeah, and if they choose the fence, then there's...
It's there.
It would just be a, yeah.
It'll just be a little fence.
Yeah.
And...
And that'd be one perhaps.
And I think we, we prefer the plantings.
So, in this case, the developer went with the plants. But I think that was what the owner wanted as opposed to the fence.
Yeah, I'd stick with, I might encourage him to stick with the plants on the commercials.
Okay, anything else that we want to talk about with buffering, screening, landscaping?
I have one additional comment under C two. Some permitted fence codes, screening standards may not alone effectively block views and may require supplemental screening. My comment to that would be, who decides if it's been sufficiently screened and, and what that administratively looks like?
Because that's somewhat subjective.
Very much so.
And that a neighbor might complain that something's not properly screened.
Okay, twenty-one point eleven, I, I don't know that we need to get into the weeds, possibly literally, on this, but twenty-one point eleven is the landscaping maintenance standards, which basically just says that any plants that are required, part of this article, which needs to be updated to, not Article five, that they must be replaced if they are dying or diseased, essentially. So we do have that enforcement mechanism, which we do not have currently at all. Okay, twenty-one point twelve, we're getting into parking, drive-throughs, and circulation. There's a fair amount of language in here. I don't know that we need to get into all the specifics on this. Couple of big picture items that I do want to point out is that the, the parking requirements are generally lower. They are much more flexible, which I am, I am looking forward to administratively, because currently we have it, so that it's, it's, under our current code, it's very difficult to tell what the parking requirements are, because they require, you know, the business to know upfront what all their staffing levels are and, you know, how many seats they're going to have, and tables, and rooms. And businesses don't necessarily know that ahead of time. And so this is much more flexible. It's basically based on the square footage of the building. So that is, that is good. And generally speaking, the requirements are lower than what they are currently. So if you, if you do have concerns that they're too low, I do want to allow some time for those concerns to come out.
The item here shown is bullet number two under twenty-one dot ten. Screening requirements possibly for residential. I know one issue that we've had in our neighborhood is what to do with these humongous trash cans. People get upset if they are visible from the street. And so if there was a requirement for future development, for there to be some sort of screening for those, because they just won't fit in the garage. Those things are huge.
Yeah, that, that would be an HOA thing.
It's just we don't have one in our neighborhood, so that is left to whoever wants to...
Oh, yeah, they're welcome to complain, and we just tell them.
That a neighbor did.
Have a nice day.
So, yes, I understand they are big. Some people put them on the side of their house.
I sent them, yeah, they'd be headache.
Yeah, so I, I didn't get into it, but I was thinking that we could add some, some language that basically adds exceptions for some of those, that screening when it comes to residential, because there's not language for that in there currently. Because I, I don't know that anybody's necessarily, you know, people, people do sometimes, actually, but no, not a lot of people are building dumpster enclosures for their trash cans on...
No.
But a lot of people do for their air conditioners. You turn the lights on and off.
Yeah.
Which is the standard for the parking? I mean, parking space per square foot, what do you mean?
Yeah, so it's twenty-one, it's twenty-one point thirteen A.
Yeah, I mean, we have seen requests for less parking. And then, you know, as far as like a, I think it's important to be flexible. I mean, and no one's going to build a residential district without the parking they need, so...
Is this a, a standard that's like, that we see elsewhere? Or is this just our own creation of a, what we think is reasonable?
So I, I did pose this question to our consultant, because the, the trend in modern zoning codes is to not have parking requirements at all. And that's actually what City of Columbus is, is doing with their new zoning code, you know, for... And so I asked, you know, is it best practice to, to not have them at all? And they said that is generally the way things are going. You know, my concern was, you know, this is still a car-dependent suburban area that needs some kind of requirements.
Yeah, yeah.
And so we kind of landed on this, okay, you know, we're going to be much more flexible in allowing businesses and developers to have less parking as long as they feel that it will suit their purposes, but still have some safeguards in place.
Then you have a maximum.
Correct.
A maximum number of parks, which should be calculated as ninety percent of the total number per person.
Yeah, and I don't think there's any way that they could hit that maximum, but it does theoretically exist.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I, I'm not challenging when I see this.
That's the way it should be. I'd leave it up to them at this point.
Yeah.
I agree with you, Robin. We are very much a car-oriented.
Yep.
Our thirty thousand people have three cars per house, probably.
Yeah, and so our, our current residential parking requirement for single-family dwelling is four. Garage spaces do count towards that requirement as do driveway spaces.
That's a lot.
Yeah, that's a lot.
It's a lot of cars.
One comment on just consistency, under the minimum spaces for residential uses, one space per unit, and then there's a footnote that says unit is a residential dwelling. I know earlier we had a conversation about a definition of dwelling unit, and so just making sure that all of the ends tie together and meet.
Just eliminate that footnote and say one space per dwelling unit.
That would work.
Yeah. My only comment was, I, I think we wanted to offer permeable pavers, and I just want to make sure the fire, fire department's okay with that, but...
There are permeable pavers that have been approved by various fire jurisdictions.
Yeah, I don't know if our fire department is trending that way yet, but we'll, we will encourage it.
Yeah, and so it's...
I think, Robin, I've sent you that information before in the past.
Yeah, and so it's, it's a little weird where it is in the text, but actually in twenty-one point nineteen, parking surface areas under B, permeable pavers are allowed with written approval from the fire department.
So I actually do have one sort of pet peeve. And that is, I don't know if we're there yet, twenty-one fifteen for our parking spaces is the aisle width. So right now, you've divided it up between compact and non-compact, and I think you can have up to twenty-five percent of your spaces being compact spaces.
Yeah.
My concern is people are still going to try to park their big truck in a compact space.
Yeah.
And then you have your...
I never paid attention to those signs.
Exactly.
Anybody got Israeli, I mean...
I'm just going to throw that out there. So, and, you know, whether or not you can get out of your car is fine, but it's the aisle width that concerns me, because you don't have an aisle width except what's sufficient of width to permit easy and smooth access to all parking spaces.
And that was somewhat by design. Currently, we don't have any aisle width standards. Typically, that's something that the, the fire department looks at more closely than zoning does.
Okay, so, because I was always taught the eighteen, I want to say twenty-four, eighteen, sixty-foot bays, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
But I know that our current minimum parking dimensions are nine by twenty, so...
Yeah.
Nine by eighteen has been asked before. It seems, that at least seems more standard itself.
That's like the city of Columbus.
Yeah, that is.
But, yeah, the fire department would, would dictate the aisleways, I would say, even though we added, we did add something, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I don't, the compact spaces, I don't have strong feelings on. I, I don't know that I've ever seen them in a lot. I see them in parking garages.
Yes.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I think, Robin, I think if we at least hack a compromise and just do, change the new standards to nine by eighteen.
Get rid of the compact.
Yeah. No one's ever, I don't think, at least, has anyone ever asked for that? Yeah.
No, I mean, the only places I know that have compact parking spaces are like tight urban areas, in particular next to the accessible ADA spots.
Right.
Because those can be narrower, but then you have the aisle way.
Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think the vehicle trend currently is that vehicles are getting bigger now. Yeah, and I, you know, I, I think the, the vehicle trend currently is that vehicles are getting bigger, not smaller. I have mixed feelings about, but, that, you know, we, I don't know that there is a ton of demand for those compact spots, either on the, the builder's side or the, the parker's side.
So, and like I said, aisle way required, um, I don't like the language of sufficient width, because it seems very subjective. But.
Uh, this does allow for shared parking, uh, which is not something that has come up a, a lot here, but has surfaced once or twice, but this does allow for a mechanism for that. Legal counsel, and I won't go over that language, because it, it does refer to the township's legal counsel.
I was gonna say, I think.
It does?
Yes.
In section two, I think we, uh, I think we had talked about just deleting that section in its entire entirety.
You don't wanna be consulted for everything.
You guys have a shared parking facility, whether or not you can legally use it is, uh, is on, is between the two of you, not the township.
That's funny. Fine.
So is this breaking camp, this is, this is ghost now, or what, what, what were you recommending it was?
So in section twenty-one point one six, B two. So in, in globally dealing with shared parking spaces and that type of thing, stepping outside of the zoning world, it is a good idea, if you have a shared parking situation, to have some type of recorded document. Um, what is in here though, is basically the parties would prepare a recorded document, prepare a document, township legal counsel would then determine if it was legally sufficient or not, and, and that sort of thing. And that's, I mean, that's way too far in the weeds in terms of what the township wants to be involved in.
I, I do think the, the intent behind it was if they are otherwise not meeting their parking minimums, that they could reduce it.
Correct.
And then we would have proof of it. But I think the, the minimums are being lowered enough that I, I don't know that it would.
So, my question is, um, parking area serves two or more lots used for non-residential purposes. So when I've seen shared parking, it is like in the short north, where during the day, all the residents are gone and businesses are there. And then at the night, the businesses are usually gone and the residents are there, or people who are going to the restaurants or whatever, but it's at opposite times, so you can have shared parking, because it is between two entities that don't share the same time slots, if that makes sense. So if you're only allowing it between two non-residential purposes, how is that spreading the capacity in terms of time?
That's, that's a good comment. Um, I will, I will note it, although this whole section, it sounds like, may just disappear, so it, it, it may be moot, but.
See, I like shared parking, I wanna permit shared parking.
It's never come up. Is there any shared parking, do you think of in Orange Township, or shared parking?
It's on the approach.
I think, I mean, I think.
I, I, you know, nobody's talking about it, is it out there?
Well, I think when we were, when we get like strip centers that come in and like wants a restaurant or retail and like, but because of our existing parking standards, it's really complicated to figure out what the total is. But I think if, with us being flexible on how we're handling those type of uses moving forward, the shared stuff might not be necessary.
I thought we talked about it with Evan's Farm, um, for some of the commercial apartment stuff. But it would make sense if you have like a big parking lot like Walmart. It's never failed.
And even all the times Evan's Town, Evan's has been here talking about upgrades, never have I heard about shared parking, never.
Well, I thought it was originally.
It could have been original, but, but never since then.
I see it in a city in Columbus with like churches, and they share the parking lot of some other buildings, because on Sunday that business isn't there.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, or, say the art museum downtown, uh, the insurance company next door says, oh, on the weekends, it's fine for people to park here, but during the week, no. One bad example that I can bring up about shared parking is at Crosswoods, uh, where you've got the big movie theater, and then you've got all the, the little restaurants. And little restaurants all have like more parking spaces, which is ridiculous. Uh, and so they, you know, parking overflows onto, uh, the, uh, the spaces that I, I assume are controlled by the, uh, by the movie theater. Where it gets weird is that there's a lot of driveways, not official streets, that separate some of those parking areas, and it's like, nobody maintains those. And they're just crumbling to dust, and it gets very dangerous to try and drive through.
Holes.
Get to some of those parking lots, yeah, you could, you could lose a wheel in there.
Yeah, you can.
And it's like, nobody takes responsibility. So I would hope that we have some sort of maintenance requirement, like we do for trees, for parking lots and associated throughways within and between parking lots. To avoid that problem.
Can, Julie, can we enforce maintenance on private roadways?
Because what you're talking about are like drive aisles.
Yeah, I don't think.
It's the township adopted a property maintenance code, but that's kinda, that's outside of zoning.
Typically what happens, all those big parking lots, we've been dealing with them before, is Walmart, Meyer, all these people have their own, that's theirs, private, right? They have their own private contractors that they hire that take care of all that stuff for holes. And here in Orange Township, I haven't seen anybody who's not taking care and maintenance of their.
Well, he just gave you an example of one who's not taking care.
That's outside the township, to be fair.
That was a general example of some shared parking, I, I didn't see that, was that here? Was that here you were talking about?
Is that the Marcus Theater?
Yeah, Crosswoods, down by where the, uh.
That's not us.
That's not us, that's Columbus.
No, it's not us.
It's not us, that's what I'm talking about, I, I think. I didn't think we had an example here.
Um, yeah, but there's been times like that the.
Well, it's like Walmart, Walmart and BJ's might have had shared parking, except Walmart built it.
I've not seen the holes, I've seen in other parking lots that I've covered from insurance perspectives. We've not even been in the ballpark with, with some low-maintained parking lots.
All right.
Are we wrapping this thing up?
Yes.
Yeah, so, uh, just to, to wrap it up on the parking lot maintenance, there is some very vague language in twenty-one nineteen that talks about stable surface required, that they have to have improved, improved surfaces that do not contribute dust, gravel, sand or soil to the air, water or ground surface, so if it was literally crumbling to dust, maybe we could, she was zoning violation. But, again, pretty rare circumstance.
Yeah, rare.
We are at two hours, which is customary for where we've been. I appreciate you all dedicating a significant portion of your evening to us tonight.
I would suggest.
And the sun has went down.
Yeah. So I, I, we have a little bit more in section twenty-one to go, but I, I think we can probably finish that up next time.
Yeah, I concur.
Section twenty-two is, uh, the, the next big chunk that we'll tackle is signage. So that, that'll probably take up the majority of our next session. I, I do, looking through the rest of the document, uh, sections twenty-three and beyond are mostly just kind of administration and procedures. Not a, a lot has, is changing there, so, uh, unless you all have strong feelings, otherwise, we may just skip over that. So I'm hopeful that we might be able to do this in, in one more session, just finish up Article twenty-one. Article twenty-two, uh, staff can take time to make our revisions, and then we can come back on this in a month or two, uh, depending on how we're feeling, and go from there. So I would ask you to pull out your calendars and look to see if we can continue this discussion to one of the next two Tuesdays, uh, if possible. So that would be April twenty-ninth or May sixth. Uh, we do have a regular meeting on May thirteenth for a zoning amendment that we just got in.
I'm okay with hanging out next week.
I'm okay, either one.
Yeah, uh, twenty-ninth is preferable.
Okay, Dennis?
Don't care.
Every Tuesday I'll be here.
All right, so it looks like the twenty-ninth is the best? All right, so can I have a motion to continue this discussion of the zoning code rewrite to April twenty-ninth at six thirty P M?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yeah.
Ms. Trebalas?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Avada Vila?
Yes.
And just to reiterate, goal is to finish the last like eight pages of the general standards, also do the signage code, that, um, and then after that, Robyn and I will take a quick look at the administrative procedures, just to make sure that's clean. We'll spend about a month to do the revisions and come back to you guys for hopefully a recommendation. Does that work?
Sounds good to me.
Okay. There is a huge spider on my plants? Do you have anything? Okay.
Take a piece of paper and rinse him out and take him out.
I didn't wanna ruin my comments.
Here, use my agenda.
You're not getting it, Mike.
Are we going, are we killing him or are we taking him out?
I, I would take him out.
I guess I should.
You're not gonna hold him on that sheet. Get outside.
He got the, he got the.
He didn't get back.
He's already gone.
Yeah, I think he's.
He's too small.
He saw that, he saw better than you. I think he got killed personally, I heard him crack.
All right, um, so it looks like the only other business we have before the commission is meeting minutes?
Yeah, so you do have one set of meeting minutes before you. I apologize again, I am horrendous at this game, I do not remember to send them to you in advance, but you do have the minutes from the previous meeting printed out in front of you. If, if you wish to approve them now, you may do so. If you want to, uh, wait until the next meeting to approve them, then I can send them out, I promise. And you can review, review them at your leisure and approve them next meeting.
How does the commission feel?
I say we can approve these and these ones.
Yeah, I'd say we, I'd say have a motion, so.
All right, uh, can I have a motion to approve, uh, the commission minutes from April first, twenty twenty-five?
So moved.
Seconded.
Mr. McNulty?
Yes.
Ms. Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Trebalas?
Yes.
Mr. Pierce?
Yes.
Mr. Avada Vila?
Yes.
All right, so I believe there's no more goodness before the commission? Then I'll call us.
Thank you.
We are done.
So on your way out, there are binders over.